All right, I call the order. Good evening, Washington Township. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. Statement of meeting notice. Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the public forty-eight hours in advance to the date setting forth, date time, location and type of meeting. Notice was sent to the Daily Record, the Observer Tribune and the Washington Township Alert. It was posted on the district website at www.wt schools.org. All please stand for much allegiance. For President's comments, I just wanted to read some updates on the referendum projects. So at Cucinella, the steam space painting is scheduled for the week of August eleventh. Masonry work is complete and the project is closed. Exterior lights still need to be installed and flashing at the main piers are being reviewed for correction. Paving, final punch list is being created by architects. Flocktown Cosman, the steam spaces at Flocktown and Cosman, the painting is scheduled for the week of August eleventh. HVAC and electrical upgrades, waiting on the transformer install date from JCPenney. Electrical switch gear has been delivered. The paving is complete, the punch list is to be created and scheduled. At Old Farmers, the steam space, the painting is scheduled for the week of August eleventh. And at LBMS, the paving project, the concrete installation is ninety percent complete. Underground structures and stormwater management are ninety percent complete. Milling started today, August twelfth, with the base layer scheduled for Monday, August eighteenth, weather permitting. The music accessory space, the framing is complete, rough electrical and plumbing is installed. In the culinary arts room, the flooring is installed. Cabinet installation is scheduled for the week of August eleventh and we're waiting delivery of appliances. The HVAC upgrades, the unit ventilator installation is ongoing. Sixteen units have been installed so far. Roof curbs are to be installed before the end of August. Condensers are on order and expected in around October of this year. The PA system upgrades, work is complete, the project is closed, but we're resolving some issues with the exterior speakers. And those are all my comments.
Okay, good evening. We're very happy to be presenting the Washington Township Schools District Goals and Board of Education Goals this evening for the 2025-2026 school year. The first goal is a data-informed instruction goal. It's the use of classroom-level data to inform instructional planning, identify learning gaps, and implement targeted interventions that meet diverse students' needs with clear learning progressions. This, the actions around this particular data really consist on the comfort level and the confidence that the teachers will have and the leadership will seem to ensure the role working together and really diving into the data. And how to look at data, to understand it, the collection of it, and how it actually supports responsive practices and high-level instruction and planning, the lesson plan and unit planning. And then really most important is to really have them feel comfortable and confident to have those discussions in professional learning communities and amongst the grade level teams, vertical orientation and horizontal orientation across the board, so that everyone understands that all of the data that's being collected is critical. From informal to formal, to standardized testing, to what's going on in the classroom, really being able to hone in on the children's needs, individualizing instruction to the children, and feel comfortable and confident with what throughout the entire career, with the data and the collection of it. District Goal number two is professional development and teacher leadership. This is to cultivate a cadre of teachers, teacher leaders equipped to advance data literacy skills by designing and delivering professional development opportunities directly informed by student performance metrics and identify instructional gaps. This again comes off of the first goal where we're analyzing data, that we're feeling comfortable with that, but also really facilitating a professional learning community with our teachers, with our staff, strengthening the communication and the confidence level and the safeness of those conversations between the leadership team and all of the educators and our support staff. And really driving conversations of our skill sets within the district and really empowering teachers to feel comfortable, to turnkey their knowledge base, even if it's outside of the content that they currently teach, but to really give them those avenues to facilitate leadership across the board, from pre-K all the way to eighth grade, and ensuring that all of that is communicating with all of our curriculum, our initiatives, and all of the programming that we're bringing on, that they need to feel comfortable and confident in, so that they can really have a sound planning and be excited, be excited to talk about what's going on in the district, what's going on in their classrooms, be able to share what's going on in their classrooms, not only with obviously the students and their peers, but with families as well. District Goal number three, this one will span from the spring of 2025 to the spring of 2028. It's strengthening early childhood through elementary curriculum implementation and instructional excellence. This is to enhance student achievement and early childhood through elementary grades by implementing comprehensive curriculum improvements and targeting professional development initiatives. Again, the actions around this are very specific in the sense of we're bringing on a program to really enhance the curriculum and to bring on a very academic-driven and rigor-driven vision for our district. So advancing through literacy, foundations will be our phonics program, arts and letters is our reading instruction program. It's a research-based early childhood literacy through all of those practices and programming, and we're launching that from K-1 with, again, that's why this goal spans through a couple of years, because we want to be able to build from K-1 and then increase it to the additional grade, grade bands. Strengthening elementary mathematics instruction through our Eureka Math Square program, which we're heading into our second year, and really honing in on our STEAM initiatives and programming to foster critical thinking, creativity, innovation. So all of these goals really communicate with each other, and also to continue to focus on inclusive educational teaching models and universal design for learning, strategies for special education students, and to develop comprehensive life skills programming, especially including at the middle school. So these goals all talk to each other and really build and will be able, the building level, to set their goals and help their, and help their teachers grow those grades. This last goal is very important as well, and this really ties in with the board goals, which I'll be presenting later on as well. This is our fourth goal, which is community governance and communication, and this is to foster a collaborative educational environment by building strong lasting relationships with families and community stakeholders while enhancing transparent communication practices and maintaining effective governance structures. And this really ties into really sound and authentic and strong partnerships with our families, really listening, being active listeners to what the community is saying, to what our parents need, being respectful of where we're going together. And that's what we want to build here. We want to build our trust so that we're moving in a direction that we all want to see for our children, and we want to see for their future, and so we're all moving in that direction together. And really expanding the opportunities for that, to have participation and to have community involved and stakeholder involvement and different opportunities that run to that. And now, these are the Board of Education Goals. Washington Township Board of Education members will continue to adhere and maintain a governance calendar through strong community collaboration and communication. The second goal is each member of the Washington Township Board of Education will earn four non-mandatory credit hours of professional development. Professional development opportunities will be communicated and shared as often as possible to allow growth in a variety of interests for every board member that's here. In addition, the board will be encouraged to earn four board credits towards maintaining its University School Board Association's Master Board Certification status. And lastly, and at least, by the end of the 2025-2026 school year, the Washington Township Board of Education will complete a comprehensive update of the district policy manual and conduct a thorough review of all required and mandated policies to ensure full compliance and accurate implementation. And so, that includes the district and the board goals. As I said, you know, those really feed into the building level planning, and then that feeds into the individual teacher plans. That really kind of encompasses the entire vision for the district. And over the, you know, these past few days, weeks ago, I had our leadership retreat, and the Advent team is, you know, one I'm extremely grateful for. They're extremely cohesive and just full of great ideas, and we are excited for a great year ahead. We're working diligently towards that now, and we're going together. And I thought that this goal really encompasses where we're at with everything that's been going on. It's amazing that what you can accomplish if you don't care who gets the credit. And that really, I think, speaks very loudly to our current leadership team, which again, I can't say I've been very grateful for, and we all are. And I'll speak for everyone when we say we're very excited for our year ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allen. Moving on to committee reports, we'll start with the Education Committee reports.
Education met Friday, July twenty-fifth at Oakdale. And in attendance was myself, Ron Brad, Rob Woskis, Mrs. Lynn Deverusso, our Director for Curriculum and Intention, and Kate Sello, the Speaker. First, the committee discussed the, discussed the summer curriculum work. We discussed the STEAM initiatives, the LA K through one and mathematics, key saying curriculum by. We also discussed the work started to improve the oral language program, which is still going to be in progress throughout the upcoming school year. We also discussed the steam spaces. The curriculum and planning for our steam spaces has been exciting and evolving. We've had great, we have had a great team working on curriculum this summer. The committee also discussed professional development. Grades K through one will be participating in training for the new structural literacy program, foundations, and the new core reading program, arts and letters. All grades K through three teachers will have training using the Devils Reading Assessment. Special education will be participating in training for specialized reading and writing instruction, and all teachers will have the opportunity to meet with colleagues, review curriculum, and enhance their technology skills in various sections throughout the district. We also discussed the summer reading assessments. K through five new students were assessed by one of the district's reading specialists to gain insight into their reading knowledge and skills to be better prepared for a smooth transition into the district. We also discussed the middle school math placement. LBMS work has been working on this diligently throughout the summer, reviewing criteria and data to identify and correct the students. Mrs. Lynn also shared that she will be scheduling cafe meetings in the upcoming weeks to spend time with families and community. She is also working on a virtual office link as an additional share for families and staff along with her open door policy. We also discussed the Danielson 2022 frontline professional growth evaluation. We, Mrs. Lynn shared that they had updated our evaluation model for educators and staff. The new platform access to professional growth and absences will be frontline, and the district will be moving away from all those.
Thank you very much. Moving on to finance facilities.
The Finance and Facilities Committee met yesterday, August eleventh. We was attended by Jess, Lindsay, Mike, Antonella, Paige, Stephanie, and me. The committee began by discussing potential improvement opportunities in the areas of chromebook damage reduction, given our new lease for chromebooks, going to distribute them to students, as well as school photos based on some feedback from last year. We'll be following up on those at future meetings. Then we reviewed a proposal from an arbitrage tracking company to track potential for arbitrage related to the referendum funds at a cost of approximately $800. District, these people were not allowed to capitalize on arbitrage opportunities without ultimately paying for them, so this company will track their students. Then the committee received updates on the referendum projects as presented in earlier slides and presentations. Next, we received an update on the class three hiring process. Mrs. Lynn and Ms. Riso participated in interviews, and we're hopeful that the Washington Township Police Department will be able to hire a candidate in time for the beginning of the school year. Then the committee reviewed the need for an additional special education teacher at Flocktown due to an additional permanent suspended special education fee. This position will hopefully be filled using breakage from recent retirements. Finally, the committee reviewed the shared services agreement with Stanhope School District, which is item number seven on tonight's agenda. This collaboration between districts fills the need for a 8.7 FTP full-time equivalent that the district budgeted for and allows us to bring in a talented professional to support our special education program while staying in the department.
Thank you. And then Communication and Governance speaking.
The Governance Committee met yesterday, August eleventh. We were attending for Jen, self, Jess, Isabel, and Ms. Lynn. We will discuss policies under the first of this day. Policies five, seven, four, zero, two, three, four, policy five, five, two, zero, two services. Policy five, three, nine, dash, dot, zero, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, one thousand, one hundred, one hundred and twenty, one hundred and twenty-one, one hundred and twenty-two, one hundred and twenty-three, one hundred and twenty-four, one hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and twenty-six, one hundred and twenty-seven, one hundred and twenty-eight, one hundred and twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, one thousand, one hundred, one hundred and twenty, one hundred and twenty-one, one hundred and twenty-two, one hundred and twenty-three, one hundred and twenty-four, one hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and twenty-six, one hundred and twenty-seven, one hundred and twenty-eight, one hundred and twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, one thousand, one hundred, one hundred and twenty, one hundred and twenty-one, one hundred and twenty-two, one hundred and twenty-three, one hundred and twenty-four, one hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and twenty-six, one hundred and twenty-seven, one hundred and twenty-eight, one hundred and twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, one thousand, one hundred, one hundred and twenty, one hundred and twenty-one, one hundred and twenty-two, one hundred and twenty-three, one hundred and twenty-four, one hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and twenty-six, one hundred and twenty-seven, one hundred and twenty-eight, one hundred and twenty-nine, one hundred and thirty, one hundred and thirty-one, one hundred and thirty-two, one hundred and thirty-three, one hundred and thirty-four, one hundred and thirty-five, one hundred and thirty-six, one hundred and thirty-seven, one hundred and thirty-eight, one hundred and thirty-nine, one hundred and forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, one thousand, one hundred, one hundred and twenty, one hundred and twenty-one, one hundred and twenty-two, one hundred and twenty-three, one hundred and twenty-four, one hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and twenty-six, one hundred and twenty-seven, one hundred and twenty-eight, one hundred and twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, one thousand, one hundred, one hundred and twenty, one hundred and twenty-one, one hundred and twenty-two, one hundred and twenty-three, one hundred and twenty-four, one hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and twenty-six, one hundred and twenty-seven, one hundred and twenty-eight, one hundred and twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, one thousand, one hundred, one hundred and twenty, one hundred and twenty-one, one hundred and twenty-two, one hundred and twenty-three, one hundred and twenty-four, one hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and twenty-six, one hundred and twenty-seven, one hundred and twenty-eight, one hundred and twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five,[1116.24]
Any discussion? Roll call?
Ms. DeCicco?
Yes.
Mr. Catano?
Yes.
Ms. Vieira?
Yes.
Ms. Succi?
Yes.
Mr. Woskis?
Yes.
Ms. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Hawley?
Yes.
Mr. Olbison?
Yes. And moving on to personnel, can I have somebody please move to personnel?
Personnel would like to make the motion to accept a regret to follow reservations. Analysts submit Flocktown classes to school structurally effective August 16th, 2025. William Round, Chanel School PT Teacher of Civil Education effective October 10th, 2025. Chelsea Ross, Chanel School, structural aid effective August 11th, 2025.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Ms. DeCicco?
Yes.
Mr. Catano?
Yes.
Ms. Vieira?
Yes.
Ms. Succi?
Yes.
Mr. Woskis?
Yes.
Ms. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Hawley?
Yes.
Mr. Olbison?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to read items 12 to 24.
22.
22.
Is that right?
Yes, you're right.
All right, so 11 through 22, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Ms. DeCicco?
Yes.
Mr. Catano?
Yes.
Ms. Vieira?
Yes.
Ms. Succi?
Yes.
Mr. Woskis?
Yes.
Ms. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Hawley?
Yes.
Mr. Olbison?
Yes. Next, I'd like to make the motion to read for the first time policies under agenda item number 23.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. I don't want to order up a can of worms, but I got to ask for them. Do we really need a sunscreen policy? It's silly. I couldn't find the statute online. I could almost find it too. I pulled that, 18, not 19, but...
You know, I'm not certain it's a mandated policy.
It had the M on it, so I don't know.
Let me check on that, Rob. I'm not positive. It seems, again, like a little bit of an overreach. I haven't agreed with you. So let me start with that beyond that. I mean, sometimes I think it's a little bit unreasonable that a lot of laws have to be codified in policies because it's the law anyway. So, you know, it just kind of has the effect of burdening up our policy managers. Let me get that.
Thank you.
In the event, I guess, if it's not mandatory, are we... Is there interest on table yet? Can we find out more information?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's the first read anyway.
First read, okay. So we voted through, but we'll find some more information before the next meeting and confirm. Okay. Is there any other discussion? Roll call?
Ms. DeCicco?
Yes.
Mr. Catano?
Yes.
Ms. Vieira?
Yes.
Ms. Succi?
Yes.
Mr. Woskis?
Yes.
Ms. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Hawley?
Yes.
Mr. Olbison?
Yes. Next, I'm making the motion to read for the second time, policy under agenda item number 24.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call?
Ms. DeCicco?
Yes.
Mr. Catano?
Yes.
Ms. Vieira?
Yes.
Ms. Succi?
Yes.
Mr. Woskis?
Yes.
Ms. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Hawley?
Yes.
Mr. Olbison?
Yes. Is there any unfinished business? Okay, moving on to new business. I had emailed everybody on the board just as a heads up. Two small items that I wanted to maybe just discuss and just get everybody's opinion on. If there's any... I don't know if there's necessarily anything I should do here, but just to kind of socialize it as a board. The first one would be live streaming the meetings versus record and upload. So obviously, at Chanel, it's kind of, we're here because LMS is undergoing construction. But even when we are back in the Performing Arts Center, I guess there's a little bit of a technical burden, I guess, on live streaming. It's also, if there's an error, it's kind of lost footage. Like if the microphone went out, we don't really know, and it's no way to really get it back. Superintendent Lynn got some additional information. So videotaping and then uploading on the website, some of the benefits are control over the quality. There's no risk of live tech failures such as internet drops or equipment glitches. It's an easier logistics setup, and it creates a clean archive and reduces pressure for everybody. I guess there's another burden on the live stream is that a lot of the equipment that we use, some of it has been upgraded, but I guess the core part of the equipment is outdated, which would require purchasing new equipment. And then, another couple little tidbit of information is live viewers. I'd actually had anticipated we had more live viewers, but it's, I'd say, average on high single digits, low teens. So to me, I mean, I prefer the live stream, but it's not necessarily, you know, it's a burden on the board and the tech team. I'm okay with, I guess, recording and then uploading later. I just wanted to kind of get everybody else's feedback. I'm kind of indifferent on it, you know, I would prefer the live stream, but if it's kind of a more nuanced thing, then I'd be okay with going to record and upload. Just curious how many everybody else thought.
Yeah, I support anyone who's live streaming. It seems to be a headache. There are collisions. I've gotten some feedback from the folks at the committee. When the audio drops out or it's hard to hear. Maybe the intention kind of fit of going to a recording-only format? Would it be possible for us to rotate our board meetings to different schools or not live streaming? We used to do that, a long time ago. It might be nice to bring that back.
Yeah, I mean, I'm open to that as well. It's a good point.
I think so. Maybe back on that. As somebody who advocated struggling for a live stream and did it personally for a while, the benefit, the reason we started it was because of COVID. The reason that we fought for it prior to that was obviously because people can't always be in meetings and we wanted the community to be involved. Because the community was not involved or informed on what was going on within the schools, and obviously which impacts the children. It does not matter if it's live or not. What matters is the quality of the information. And if there are glitches, if it doesn't go live at all, which is one or twice a day. Like you said, it's lost information. I mean, yeah, there's minutes, but it's just not the same thing. I also think the benefits of having recorded and what I've seen other districts do, because a lot of them switched after we came back from both of their lives recording. If you have more student recognition, like you want to do, but there are students whose parents are not comfortable with them being recorded or whatever, you can edit out their faces, you can leak out their names. The other thing I've seen done, which is actually nice for district distinctions, is you can edit other footage. And so when you do your district distinctions, we can edit in pictures of the things that you're actually talking about so that the community can see it. So I see a huge amount of that there. So I'm pretty big on switching to recording for that reason. Plus, like you said, most people watch it the next day.
Yeah, I was actually surprised to see that the live stream number of viewers was, like, there was one, the maximum on here was 58. But I mean, there was as many as two, four, five. Like I said, the average, I would say, is probably around the mid-teens. So, you know, it's not as utilized, I guess, by our public as I thought it was. So I don't know, if anybody had anything else to add?
I'd just like to say that if it's not interactive when it's live streamed, then there's really no purpose in it, as opposed to what you're just saying.
Yeah. Yeah, it seems like recording it and uploading it is a little bit more professionalized at the end result. And you're not sacrificing potential technical issues with that. So, I mean, I'm in favor of once... Again, we're not doing it here for everybody in the public because we normally have our meetings at LMS, which has the technical infrastructure to do it. But even when we go back there, I guess, people will make the transition on just doing a record and upload, unless anybody else has anything else against it. Okay. The next thing is just, there's been some discussion on attending, board members attending the meeting virtually through Google Meet. I mean, I'm open for feedback as well, but, you know, I... We use it at work, so I think it's hard for me to say, but I get it. This is more of a look official, you know, we were all voted in to office. But, you know, the technology does exist, like, does happen. I'd like to see it maybe, you know, I don't want anybody to abuse it and never show up for a meeting, obviously. But I mean, when there's a conflict, and we all have it, we all have jobs, we all have family. You know, I'm okay with people using it. Like I said, I'd like to not see it be abused or anything like that. I'm not saying anybody is doing that, but I'm in favor of maintaining that as an option for board members. But I'm open for feedback on that as well.
I agree. I want the opportunity to be able to hear what everyone has to say. I know sometimes it's important to share with a person. I do think it's important that we have something in place that says that we have to participate in the entire meeting, not just talking something we care about. I would say that's a thing, but I do think it's important to kind of set some boundaries that everyone goes by. But I hate for people to take away from sickness or work, whatever it might be, and then don't get to hear what they're saying because it's a whole new time for a less known person. It's important to get what they're saying.
Okay.
So I'm not super strong about this, but I'm definitely leaning toward boards getting rid of it, here's why. We will do it again after COVID with everything else that we had going on at the time, or if there's to try at that time. The technology piece is there, but it's not. We've tried it several times. People have cut in and out. You can't even hear them. And if we're going to report it too, they can can't always get a good recording of what's being said. And we have had situations where people were only able to be on for a couple of minutes at a time because of bad connection. I think that, like you said, we are all parents, we are all active community members. I think we owe it to ourselves, if we have the family obligation, to actually take that time. A lot of us take time away from our families for this because we are elected officials. But I give three hours to our families to actually unpack if it's a big family, whatever. And that's not exactly the value you want to be participating in a board meeting in anyway. Plus, we also have where, I'm not encouraging this, but I mean, it's, because I want people to participate more, not less. But we do have where you can miss a whole board meeting, so it's a bit personal. So that's just how we do it.
Yeah, the technology does seem to be intermittent. I mean, like, it never really seems to work out as well as any other support. How you use Microsoft seems to work some, you know, I get it, it works, it's great. We haven't had as much success with that here in the district as I have in Europe. I think the other piece of it is when folks do tend to dial them out, they... There's not a lot of deliberation in it. I'm not sure it adds a whole heck of a lot. I don't know that it's ever allowed us to have a forum where otherwise we would have. Again, deliberation seems very small, so people dial in and so on. Again, it seems to be a little bit of a headache and a logistics burden that a lot of that.
Okay.
May I?
Sure.
So I've used the virtual dial-in, and for me, it's been extremely beneficial traveling. If I'm here physically, can I come to every meeting? I haven't missed one yet if I'm in town, but if I'm traveling, just last month, I attended the meeting virtually. For me, that was important, even with the time difference. So if I have something of value to communicate, to share, then I do. But I'd like to be present in the very best possible way, whether physically or virtually. And I do make that effort. I mean, unless I'm on a, and even on a plane, I have dials in virtually and attended a meeting. So if I'm willing to make the effort, I'm on a web, I'd like that personally to be an option.
It also allows elected board members to go on missions. That's been a multiple time where we had important votes in the traveling portion. Teleporting options, telehealth, allow that elected missions to go with it. So taking that way, you can factor all unpaid volunteers doing this, I mean, consider some of those have more responsibility and support of the travel holders. That flexibility allows them to be able to go on missions.
Yeah. Sure, go ahead.
So from a legal point of view, I have no issue with all board members participating, or leave by whatever platform you decide. The only thing I would say is that if we do decide to go in that direction, it's a good idea to have a policy around it. I can certainly send the committees some samples that I've helped develop for some of my other clients that puts a parameters around, we want to have limits as to how many times a board member, for instance, can participate. Do we want to say that you have to be, you know, far enough away that you couldn't physically be here? What are the rules going to base around an exact section? We need to be obviously at a private location. So if we're going to do it, my advice is let's get rid of policy meetings.
Thank you. Yeah, so maybe we'll just, you know, I mean, unless anybody has anything else material to add, then maybe we'll put this down and maybe revisit it over between this board meeting and next meeting. If it's still unresolved, it can be brought up again in unfinished business next board meeting. But I'd be happy to see maybe some samples on codifying it as a policy. So maybe we'll take that approach. Again, I'm not, I'm kind of indifferent, you know, I could be persuaded, I guess, one way or the other. But I'd like to see maybe what some other districts do, so I think that's a good idea. Does anybody else have anything else to add? Okay. So next, for agenda items, 25 to 26. I'd like to make a motion to adopt board goals for the 2025-2026 school year as written under agenda item number 25.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call?
Ms. DeCicco?
Yes.
Mr. Catano?
Yes.
Ms. Vieira?
Yes.
Ms. Succi?
Yes.
Mr. Woskis?
Yes.
Ms. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Hawley?
Yes.
Mr. Olbison?
Yes. Next, I'd like to make a motion to adopt district goals for the 2025-2026 school year under agenda item number 26.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Ms. DeCicco?
Yes.
Mr. Catano?
Yes.
Ms. Vieira?
Yes.
Ms. Succi?
Yes.
Mr. Woskis?
Yes.
Ms. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Hawley?
Yes.
Mr. Olbison?
Yes. Next, moving on to public comment. This is public comment on all items. If you do have a public comment, please approach the microphone and state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. District distinctions, I don't really have anything district-wide at this time, other than the summer went very fast. This is our last board meeting before the start of the school year. So I want to wish everybody a happy rest of the summer. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.